Good evening, everybody. It's 6:30. It's February 26th. Believe it or not, it's a Tuesday night and a Wednesday night. We're going to start off our meeting as we always do with the mission statement. But I have a really bad cold, so we're going to ask a special guest in the audience to come up and read our mission statement. It's Kaia Ludwig. Kaia, right? Excellent. You have them right there. Is it on, guys? We'll check everybody.
Oh, I got it. Sit on that? Okay. Just start one over. Okay. The district's mission statement is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which we prepare, engage, educate, empower, and inspire all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society.
Thank you, Kaia. You mind if we ask you a couple of questions?
No, I don't mind.
Okay. And you're an Apollo student, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Does any board member have questions they'd like to ask at this time?
Yeah.
You are here as a special guest.
Yes.
Could you tell us why?
I'm assuming because we just came back from the state meet for gymnastics this last weekend.
Fantastic. Tell us about that experience, will ya?
It's a super fun experience, especially going with the team. Just being able to have fun, do your best, compete with the team that you've been with all year. It's amazing. It's like nothing I've ever experienced before.
And we're going to ask you the question we always ask, at least board member Bruce Moe's always asked it. What are your plans after high school? What are your dreams?
My plans after high school are to go to college. I'm not sure which college I want to go to yet, but it'd be really cool to play college softball, too.
And then I'm going to ask you that personal question. Tell me about your knee.
So last year at state gymnastics, I tore my left ACL during warm-ups. And so I didn't get to compete that year. It put my whole team through something that they've never been through either. And it took, I got the surgery on March 9th of that same year. Took about nine months to recover through PT and just going myself and working through everything. And I came back to gymnastics and started competing bars and then slowly worked my way back into all-around at sections. And then we ended up going to state again.
I just have one last question or comment. A little birdie told me that you don't usually do floors.
No.
But this year you took one for the team and did, huh?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, it was just like the whole year, we were just, it was, we wanted to go to state as a team and we weren't scoring as high as we wanted to. And so I talked to my coach and asked him if it was okay if I tried to step up for our team and help out as most as I could. And if that meant to get over the fear of doing all-around again, then I'd be willing to do that. And I ended up doing that at sections. And then we just had an awesome meet that weekend and we ended up winning and going to state.
Very cool. A 9-2, 9-5, 9-2, and a 9-2? That's really good scores. All right. Anybody else have any questions?
Tonight, we're having the Apollo High School presentation. And if you didn't know, that Kaia here is on what we would call the tech gymnastics team as displayed on her shirt, but it's actually a co-op. And she does represent Apollo High School on that team.
All right. Thank you, Kaia.
Thank you.
You good? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Kaia.
We will officially call the meeting toward at 6:35. Les, would you lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and with all liberty and justice for all.
And now roll call, if you would, please, Les.
Jeff Polrize.
Here.
Monica Segura Schwartz.
Here.
Al Dolgren.
Here.
Shannon Hawes.
Here.
Natalie Ringsmuth.
Here.
Zach Dorholt is...
He's at...
All right. We'll remind him of that when he gets here. And Les Green is here. Also in attendance, Superintendent Willie Jett, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Marcia Beisch, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching Lori Posh, Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education Carol Potter.
Pardon? She's absent.
She's absent. Is there anything else I should know before I continue? I've got two wrong already. A third strike and I could be out.
I'll take that one.
Just a minute. Let me look around the room and make sure. Okay.
All right.
Executive Director of Operations Gary Ganji. Executive Director of Finance and Business Services Amy Galerud. Where's Amy? There she is. Okay. Executive Director of Human Resources Tracy Flynn Bowe. And Executive Director of Community Education Adam Holm. And Director of Community Engagement and Communications Tammy Deland.
All right. Thank you, Les. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the board routinely adopts without debate, meaning any single member of the board may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of these items can be found at the end of the agenda. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Al?
Actually, I'm not looking to remove anything from the consent agenda except for the approval of the agenda. I would like to make an amendment to rearrange the agenda and move our superintendent's report from item number four, Reports, to number, to letter A under Information Items, so that our superintendent can give his report. And then he has a very important function that he needs to attend at some point tonight over at Tech High School. It's the very last game being played in the Tech High School Gymnasium, and it's very important that Willie be present. And so that would give him the opportunity to leave when he felt it was prudent to do so.
All right. So moved.
Second.
There was no motion yet.
All right. We need a motion?
I thought it was a motion.
Are you going to, if, yes. I will move to approve the consent agenda item.
Second.
Second.
Les, you want to take a role?
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Monica Segura Schwartz.
Yes.
Zach Dorholt. I'm sorry. Where's Zach when I need him? Jeff Polrize.
Here.
Les Green is yes. Al, here?
And yes.
Les Green is yes. Al Dolgren?
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Les.
All right. Just for clearance, I'll read the agenda, too, because we actually did approve it. It's approval of tonight's agenda, approval of the minutes from January 16th and February 6th meetings, approval of payment of bills and other financial transactions in the grand amount of $8,530,310.86. Approval of personnel staff changes, acceptance of grants, awards, and donations. Bid Award Oak Hill Roof Replacement went to the McDowell Company low bin. Item G was call for requests for proposals for local and long-distance phone service. Item H was Tech High School new site change orders totaling $116,243.44. Proposed new board policy 497 was the third and final reading. All right. Now we will move on to the informational items. First up is the superintendent report.
Good evening, Chair Polrize and members of the board. First and foremost, starting with students. South student Kristen Allen won a Dexter R. Stanton MLK essay and visual art contest award. The award was presented at the 2019 Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Breakfast and Day Service, Day of Service. This year, there were 257 entries from kindergarten to college, and they gave 22 awards. Artwork is on display at the Rivers Edge Convention Center through February. Next, congratulations to the four Tech High School robotic teams who participated in the state tournament. Three of the teams made it to the elimination rounds. Team A won the state teamwork award. Team A includes Katerina Frank, Kaylee Kraska, Jacob Starin, and Logan Frank. Congratulations also to five of our seven North Junior High Robotics teams who participated in the state tournament. They were competing against the top 60 out of 93 middle school teams in Minnesota and North placed second in the state. Also, congratulations to the Boys Varsity Breakaway Alpine Ski Team. They took second place at the sections and are headed to state. Bill Nelson tied for sixth overall. Again, congratulations to Apollo's Logan Bachan, the Section 3A Swimming Section Champion in 100-meter breaststroke. Logan will be competing in the state championship meet this weekend in the 100-meter breaststroke as well as the 200-yard individual medley. Best of luck to Logan. There's a young man, and I know Principal Johnson is out in the crowd. There's a seventh grader who made it to the state tournament in terms of wrestling from North, and I, his last name?
Kanek.
Kanek. And, oh, his name is Jackson Kanek. And just wanted to say good luck to Jackson. And we're talking about a seventh grader making it to the state. Also, we'd like to extend our congratulations, now I'm going to staff, we'd like to extend our congratulations to Bonnie Malter, first cook, and the nutritional services staff at Discovery Community School, who were selected to receive the 2018 Food Safety Award from the Stearns County Environmental Services Department. The Stearns County Board of Commissioners presented Bonnie and her staff with a plaque recognizing this accomplishment in food safety at the beginning of January. Oh, Zach's here. Good evening, sir. Next, staff. Madison Principal Kate Flynn recently was honored by the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association as recipient of their 2019 Division Leadership Award. The award expresses appreciation to the many outstanding individuals in the principalship who have contributed generously to improving education, their communities, and their profession. Congratulations to Ms. Flynn. And this is appropriate. The Local Education and Activities Foundation honored coaches, volunteers, and instructional leaders at its annual awards reception held on February 11th. Congratulations to Jill Lipp, Apollo High School, and Pete Mantich, Apollo Tech, Apollo Tech High School, who received the Coach-Directing Excellence Awards. And to Tammy Wilson, Principal, Discovery Community School, who received an Instructional Excellence Award. Next, the Shields One District One Book Event helped collect approximately 500 books as a result of the launch party. All books were donated to the Local Education and Activities Foundation as part of the PACRAT, People and Kids Read a Lot Together program. Ms. Pat King, Director of Title Programs for St. Cloud Area School District 742, is a recipient of the 2019 National Association of Federal Program Administrators Leadership Award. The mission is to support leadership and management of federal education in America's schools and to advocate for America's youth. This award will be presented in Washington, DC in March. Pat has spent the last four and a half years in the St. Cloud Area Schools overseeing the district's title programs as well as several state programs and supporting school improvement initiatives. This honor seems a fitting way to wish her well in retirement. And lastly, as you may have noticed, we've been having some difficulties with weather in the last few weeks in central Minnesota. I have just something that's out there. And as a result, last week's Board of Education meeting was canceled and rescheduled to this evening. However, I did not want a recognition to go unnoticed. Last week was National School Board Recognition Week, and I want to make sure to thank all of our school board members for their commitment to the success of all of our District 742 students and staff. Your dedication is appreciated. And with that, that concludes my long superintendent's report. I do need to say thank you to the board for allowing me to attend that event at Tech High School. It is the last game ever in the Tech Gymnasium. It also is the boys' basketball game, and I might just have a little interest in that because there's a young person that I might know who's playing for Tech. So thank you for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you much. Let the record reflect that board member Zach Dorholt is here now. We will move on to the Leaf Education and Activities Foundation Report. President Elizabeth Reisinger. Peggy's not here, right?
Yeah, she, she is also at the Tech Basketball Game.
Oh, okay.
She's a pretty big superfan, so.
Are you joining that, Bruce, or?
No.
Oh, okay. All right.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to the board, to the staff, and administration for having us. I am Elizabeth Reisinger. I'm the president of the Leaf Board of Directors. This is actually my third, going into my third year of leading the board. I'm in my second term on the board. So I very much appreciate the opportunity to tell you briefly about what we've been up to for this past year. And just personally, I have two children at Madison, fifth grader and a second grader. And Mr. Dorholt, I can appreciate how hard it is to reschedule conferences there. I just came from there as well, so. And a little bit about me personally, I actually, and my family and I, we actually live in Sartell, and we open and roll into the program at Madison, and we adore it. I love it.
Hang on. I didn't hear that. What was that?
I actually live within walking distance of all three schools in Sartell. So we bring our children to Madison. We love it. And my children are better humans because of the education they've received. So thank you. I know you always don't have very easy decisions here, and we appreciate your commitment to all the children in 742. So with that, I'll get going here. All right. Here's our mission. You can all read, so I will spare you the play-by-play. However, two things I really want to emphasize. Excellence and opportunity. Those two words come up a lot in our meetings when we're talking about current initiatives, new initiatives, where Leaf will excel and think can do better. So those are the two things, excellence and opportunity, that we take very seriously. A little bit about the criteria we use to determine if we will take on a new project, initiative, or fund. Number one, this is crucially important. Is it a program the district supports but cannot offer? We work very closely with the district. We enjoy a very good working relationship with them, and we do not do anything that does not have their seal of approval on it. Does it directly impact students? Again, number one, we don't do anything that doesn't impact students. We don't fund staff. We don't, we try not to do any even things related to transportation unless there's special funds, which we will, we'll discuss in a minute. So other than that, we look down and say, does it promote a comprehensive educational program? We want balance. We want to make sure that we're not doing anything in one area and then not doing something in another area. Does it increase public confidence and involvement in the public school system? We are huge ambassadors of 742. We're proud to support the students of 742, and we are incredibly proud to elevate some of the programs that 742 offers. Does it build links? This becomes increasingly important as we talk about some of our programs, particular PACRAT and the Homeless Student Services Fund. We really reach out to other people, other organizations within this system because we aren't the only ones that do great things in the city. So we try to make sure that we leverage those connections as much as possible. District-supported, again, do we have the capacity to take it on? We have a wonderful executive director who some of you may know, Bruce Henches, who technically works only half-time, and he's our only staff member. So we try to make sure that we are not bogging him down, that we can take it on, and that we can also sustain it. And will it impact Leaf's ability to make discretionary allocations in the future? We want to make sure that it doesn't impact our endowment in such a way that we cannot grant to some of the projects and other activities that we currently do. We're going to go through some numbers in a couple of slides. So just to give you an idea of our impact, since the activities fund started in 1993, we're now at $800,000 as of today. Academic, over $500,000, and the Leaf Endowment is at 1.3 million. Total grants since we began granting in 1996, Leaf started in 1993, however, we did not grant until the academic year of 1996 because our endowment finally reached $200,000. Again, you can see that impact. The three in red are programs I will be discussing in a couple more slides, just to give you more information. Oh, and I should tell you, in front of you, there is our annual report. Some of the, some of the more intricacies of some of these programs is detailed at length. And also, I'll take questions at the end if you have any. Here's what we've done this year. Again, the three biggest numbers in there, the spring and fall activities grants, the spring academic grants, our homeless student services funds, and our adopt a classroom. That is a pretty typical number for us, between eight, 80, and 90 classrooms adopted. That is a direct, technically a direct flow-through. Businesses and parents give us $250, and we turn that right around and give it to a classroom either of their choosing or our choosing. The direct flow-through is important. That is a number that if someone wants to give to a particular program within the district, let's say they want to buy or help the volleyball team buy new uniforms. We make it easy for them because it's much more difficult for them to give to the district itself. They give it to Leaf. We write the check directly back to the district. Makes it pretty easy for everyone involved. Major donations. We're really lucky and to have really great relationships with individuals, with businesses, and with other foundations that help support our work. And as you can see, some of them give directly to the endowment. Some of them give to particular causes or programs that they feel a kinship with. And this list keeps growing. We're very, very blessed to have such philanthropic donors and as well to enjoy lots of really great relationships. The Homeless Student Services Fund. This is one fund in particular that is only four years old, but we are really seeing its impact. It began in the fall of 2014. We began granting in 2015, and we worked diligently with both district officials, with other organizations and associations throughout St. Cloud to help students and families experiencing homelessness. We found that there was a gap. There was a gap particularly for students. We know any time last year, it was about 250 students. Now it's about 350 students at any time within the district experience homelessness. We help to fill in those gaps. We, we rely heavily on some of the district's social work and other staff people to help reach them. There's a very, we're very diligent in our anonymity of this program, but we also know that, that not everybody can get the services in the times that they need them. So that's when you see that half of it goes to crisis shelter. That's what it is. We also help in various other ways. We have a committee that helps decide and takes a good look at all the expenditures and make sure that we're completely transparent, as much as we can be. So it's a, it's a great program. We had two couples last year step up, each with a $10,000 challenge grant, and we were able to really bolster that fund. And as you can see, we continue to get donations for that, and we continue to use them. The Leaf Activities Participation Fund. This is relatively new, and it's one we're really excited about. For several years, our grants were always requesting help with transportation and other, other incidentals when it comes to participating in activities. We know that kids do better in school when they are in activities, point-blank. Doesn't matter if it's athletics, if it's arts, if it's robotics, doesn't matter. And we know that students particularly of certain socioeconomic levels on free and reduced lunch, they do not participate in activities at the same rate. And we know that those students are also particularly vulnerable when it comes to academic achievement. So we help with some of those incidentals in participating in activities. Physicals and equipment, everything from soccer shoes to a physical at the start of the year. This year, we were given a difference-maker grant, and the Morgan Family Foundation stepped up to help us fund a bus for the middle school programs. It helps, it helps two areas. One, we know that students, if they start an activity in middle school, are more likely to continue it or do another activity in high school. We know that middle school children in particular are very vulnerable. It's a vulnerable time sociologically and emotionally. Can you tell I have a middle schooler almost? But we know, we know that also that some of them may want to participate, they just can't get there. And we know that high school students are much better about ride-sharing, there's drivers. So middle school transportation was a key area. We have been running a middle school activity bus at Kennedy at North and at South from the fall for winter one. Winter two will begin soon and spring. And we have seen the rates of participation increase to a level that we are very excited about. But we also know, and I'm preaching to the choir here, transportation is expensive. So we're working to make sure that fund maintains a balance so we can keep that bus going. PACRAT. PACRAT's a great program. I love it so much, and it's one of our milestone programs as far as Leaf is concerned. PACRAT, obviously, as Mr. Jett said, is the people and kids reading a lot together. It's, I'm not quite sure of how old it is, however, I know that its impact is great. From preschool to grade three, kids get a book. They, sometimes they get two or three books that are developmentally appropriate and leveled to their reading level. They bring it home. We read it together. A parent or an older student or a guardian signs the forms, they bring it back. That happens over 143 times, 43,000 times throughout the school year. Anecdotally, I will say, the PACRAT program pretty much helped my children to read. And I am a writer. Our house is filled with books, but these are books that increase their confidence level. They can, they can start, they're literacy books. They're perfect for what we need. In the summertime, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, the big green bus rolls through St. Cloud. Kids, over 2,000 kids checked out 5,000 books all throughout the summer. Sarah Martini coordinates grants for us, along with several of her colleagues, helps staff the bus. It is a wonderful program. We enjoy lots of great partnerships with Rotary, Kiwanis, and lots of other individual donors that help keep the program going. And as you can see, I'm not alone. 92% of parents say it's awesome. And it's a really great way, again, we know that parents and at-home involvement helps a child succeed academically, probably more than anything else. This does things twofold. It's a literacy program that increases involvement at home, which is just fabulous. So, we're taking that success of PACRAT and now making it math. We were approached by SCSU Elementary Professor Melissa Hansick Brill, who some of you know, about the idea of doing a math literacy program that has manipulatives like books, but it would be lessons and other math-type activities that would then, kids would bring home. They'd do the activity and they'd bring it back. We've done, with the district's blessing, we did the, we're doing a pilot program with 500 students in the preschool program. We are currently seeking funds and grants to possibly extend that from pre-K to three, much like the PACRAT program. We're also going to be doing a Best of 742 photo contest. Again, we are the biggest ambassadors for 742. Well, there's a lot of great stuff going on at 742, some of which we don't see. So, we're asking people to send us their photos. We're going to give a prize each semester and we'll also help, um, elevate some of the cool things happening throughout the district. Another cool thing that just happened, the Night of the Stars. I don't know if you were able to get there. If you weren't, it was amazing. I go every year. I am astounded by the level of, um, just brilliance that our children have when it comes to arts and entertainment. Some of them, everything from, um, school choirs to individual acts that students put together themselves. It is a fundraiser for us. We do a direct ask because it helps our Activities Endowment, but it's a great way to showcase the talent throughout 742. Next year, it's usually always the second or third weekend in February at the Paramount. And finally, um, our grant applications for activities and academics are due, or were due. Um, and this year, we put them all online, which I'm so excited about because we don't have any paper trail, any more paper that we have to distribute to our allocations committee. I think it'll make it easier particularly for new staff to apply for our grants. And my vice chair, Peggy Carlson, who's at the Tech basketball game, she has really led this charge and it was a lot in the front-end, particularly with the software, but I think it'll make everything a lot easier in the long run. So, I can't say enough about how excited we are about that. And that's it. You can always find us, um, online. You can always email me, Bruce, the rest of the executive committee, any of our board members, if you have any questions. So, I'll leave it open.
Natalie?
Well, I was so pleased to come to the LEAF night.
Yeah.
And learn more about your programs. And, um, I have a couple of questions, uh, since I've gotten to see this now twice, now I can actually ruminate in it.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering about the homeless students. You said last year, uh, there was about 250 and we might need to, um, ask other folks here about this. And this year, it's 350. Do you know if that's because we, and in the district level, are identifying more kids that are homeless? Or is that the change that's happening in our community?
That I don't know. I know that it is up over 100 students. The reason I know this is, we work quite, quite closely with some of the staff people, but we also gather the numbers because we were working with the Women's Fund. Last year, um, one of our, um, two donors stepped up and danced for us at their annual Dancing with Our Stars. And they particularly wanted data on women and girls, but we also discovered there's about 100 more families experiencing homelessness. I don't know how they harness those numbers. And really, that's probably a, um, that's a good point when it comes to many of the programs that we do, particularly with vulnerable communities. We tend to, um, really stay out of a lot of that data gathering. We work directly with the district because we want to make sure that their anonymity is protected. Um, but I'm, I'm sure anyone here could probably find out how they gathered those numbers and how they keep track of that. I, we keep track of the finances on our end, so, yeah. And we know, we know how many families and some, and things that we serve, but I'm not quite sure about the total number.
Okay, thanks. The other question I had, I put two more. Um, one is PACRAT kind of versus Imagination Library. So, I sit on the board, um, for United Way, not the board, but, um, the Community Impact Team. And so, we consistently talk about overlap when it comes to programming and how we can bring folks together to do even more. And I know that PACRAT and Imagination Library are inherently different from each other, but I'm wondering if there's ever been any talk about bringing those two programs together in a way that would support each other. Um, it's just my United Way hat for a minute, thinking about that.
You know, um, I know United Way, the Imagination Library stops it. It's almost like they stop at age five and we pick it up.
Okay.
Because, um, you know, when you get that kindergarten book at age five, that's when the Imagination Library books stop. So, in some ways, we kind of feed off of each other. Um, the other thing that's really important is, um, the PACRAT books are curriculum reading leveled. Like, these are not interesting books particularly at K, K2. I mean, they are one, two-word sentences that help build a reader's confidence, whereas the Imagination Library books are awesome. Some of the best picture books and some of the best narratives out there in children's literature. So, I would say they work more in tandem. There is probably some ways to talk about particularly when, because the funding costs of books, as you know, I mean, the cost of Imagination Library in general is very high. And book depreciation is our number one cost when it comes to PACRAT. So, there probably is a way, maybe a co-op buying or something like that, but I know Sarah Martini works really closely with Scholastic and some other vendors to make sure we're getting really great prices on some of those books. So, um, if anything, we can feed off each other because they're both great literacy programs, which are fabulous and wonderful to keep kids reading at all levels, which I can't say enough about because it's a great program. Both of them are.
I like what you said there, that that's basically a continuation. So, that's neat. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Uh, middle school bus for activities, um, that is something that is amazing. And I actually don't have any questions about it. I have two middle schoolers at North and they don't utilize it because our family's able to send one parent to pick it, uh, to pick them up. But I know what, uh, being in way, in my opinion, way too many activities that my kids are in, um, has meant to them and really meant for them to feel ownership over their school and to feel like that's their place. And so, for our, the marginalized folks in our community that this is helping, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, Bruce. And thank your board for me, please.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jeff.
Anytime. Anybody else?
I would have questions for you, but I was at that same presentation. Monica?
Hi, thank you very much for being here. Well, since Natalie bring it up, um, I have a question that I have asked also United Way about, um, the PACRAT program, so, to them about the Imagination Library. Do you, um, have books in other languages and/or you plan and have you have conversations about it or?
You know, that I don't know. I, I know that the EL program is looking into, and one of the things for our fund to need this year was to get a more comprehensive curriculum for EL in general that is subject appropriate for EL students. The other, um, languages, like for Spanish and Chinese immersion, each of those programs, I can just speak for Chinese. I don't know the specifics of Spanish. They have sort of a mini PACRAT in their own rooms. So, like, my student, who is a fifth grader, brings home Chinese chapter books to read, very similar to the PACRAT program. Um, but it's not, it's not a particular, like, PACRAT funds don't go to that. That's just something that the teachers themselves have kind of set up. So, that's all I know about the language part of it. Um, and again, I don't know as far as the EL program. That'd probably be a better question, um, for, oh, I can see her in my head, but I can't place her name. So, yeah, Kelly. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
You're welcome. Thanks for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is the Apollo High School presentation, presented by Principal Al Johnson.
Good evening. And so, as I have had some time and I, I do appreciate the little extra time because it allows me to reflect, as opposed to presenting last week to this week, a lot's happened in a week. Um, about a year ago, I had an opportunity to meet someone. And I've taken that meeting into this year and a lot of what I'll do going forward. Recognizing that I have not been in this business a whole, a long time. However, when I met with Mr. Kenny, he told me some things. He said, care about the people around you. Don't make it just about yourself. Realize that things have to change and will change, but go into it with the right attitude. He said these words. We don't know if change will bring a better condition, but we'll never have a better condition unless we're willing to change. And I believe that. And so, July comes. And I'm down at Lake George enjoying the music and the food and I get a phone call. Al, Apollo's on fire. Are you kidding me? Then I remember Paul Kenny. Adversity will come. How you handle it is what's going to make the difference. And so, we get there. And this is what it looks like. And I sit there and I'm making phone call after phone call, wondering what have, what am I going to do? What happens next? And I reach out then to my community partners. We realize that quite a bit of the building, four, five and six, is not going to be able to be used. And we're going to need to plan on how we're going to start our school year because school must go on for our students. And so, in August, a group of teachers, district members, we got together and we began to craft a plan on exactly how we were going to have a successful year at Apollo. What are we going to do for our students and families? We had to consider our schedule, knowing that B-Wing is going to be closed, that's that four, five and six areas. What's the schedule going to look like? Because how are you going to get 1,500 students into two-thirds of a building? What about lunches? What's that going to look like? Events, transportation. Many of these things had to be taken into consideration. We landed on, as you know, an alternating, alternating day schedule. And that was looking at multiple of school districts and what they have done in these types of situations and how do we keep the learning going? But most importantly, how can we get all the kids back in school on day one and not have that disruption? And it worked really well. Ninth and 10th graders come in on one day, alternating with our 11th and 12th graders, utilizing blended learning, online learning, utilizing this technology that our community said, hey, we need this in our schools. And there was a lot of great learning that happened then. We deployed 1,350 laptops before the first day of school. Now, I cannot say thank you enough to the community, district employees that came and volunteered their time. Didn't have to do that. This is in the summertime, right? And, and, and to support Apollo. That, again, talks about the strength of our community. While device deployment is going on, this is what the building actually looked like. And there were times, absolutely, when we thought, can we do this? There were many tears that were shed during that time. And man, those pods were hot. Three sections packed into pods where teachers' materials are located, but we have to start on, school on time. Not, not only myself, but others did, went above and beyond to make sure that teachers had what they need in their classroom so they could teach their kids. This is what we believe at Apollo though. We believe in family, children, honesty, love and integrity. These are Apollo's core values. This is where we started our year as a staff. These are the values we had agreed upon. And then September comes. Guess what happens when September happens? Here comes the kids. And we welcomed them into a new facility. And it really was that for many of the students. I want to show you a quick video of what the students saw when they came back. And because you've got the change in the schedule, the change in the building, so students not knowing where they may go, what the classes looks like. This is how we welcomed them back.
Hey! Welcome back to school and this craziness. Woo!
So, in case you don't know me, I'm Ms. Sebastian.
Ms. Herbolt.
Ms. Morrell.
And, uh, Ms. Morrell here made an awesome, awesome Google sheet to help you find your way around the cloud, uh, around the school in this craziness. Uh, so, don't use your schedules. Use the sheet instead.
Yep. Your schedules have the ones that you'll use once we get the whole school back. So.
Which is hopefully soon.
Yes.
So, on this document, you're going to find your teachers listed in alphabetical order, what room number they're going to be in on your in-school days and their Schoology codes, as many as we have, for their classes. Right here, we're talking about planning room. But let's say you want to know about your Period One classes. You can go to the bottom of this document. These tabs are nicely labeled and you can click on Period One.
So, for example, um, again, Sebastian starts the desk, scroll on down to the S's and you will find that first hour, my class is in room 718 there.
And so on. And so, it was very detailed. It made it really easy for the students to know where they needed to be, how to get from class to class. But we also talked about, so that was just when they're in the building. There was a concern that once students are not in the building, when they're at home, will they still be able to have access to technology? We gave them the laptops, but what about hotspots? And what we did was, there were hotspots around the city. It was fantastic. Also with lunch. So, as a great example of our, one of our community partners, the Boys and Girls Club, we had some of our Sanae Foundation Dreamline workers, and I'll talk about them later on, that met students there, did tutoring for students on this, and helping them along with Schoology, um, which was great. And then we also fed them lunch while they were there. And so, it, it, it worked out as a win-win and again, showed a great partnership between students and our community. We believe at Apollo the Eagle soar. And this is part of our PBIS model, believing in safety, optimism, acceptance and respect. These are some of the great spaces. So, thank you, District Office for leaving. Um, we miss you. Um, but it does, it did create opportunities. Um, again, so, again, not all bad. Through the adversity, there's some great things that happen. If you see our new pilot classroom, if you ever get a chance, similar to what Tech may have, uh, it, it's fantastic and it shows where we're going next. It shows the hope. It's, it's, and it's great for kids as well. That's Mrs. Lahr there in her classroom, one that maybe not necessarily was planned, but heck, the space was there and it makes sense, uh, to have that space there. Our demographics. Now, we've got 1,450 students at, at Apollo and this is what it looks like. Okay? 56% students are color in, in our, in our space. But that's numbers. This is what Apollo looks like. What we strive for at Apollo is so that every student can show up as their authentic self, regardless of race, regardless of belief. We want you to come to our building who you are. Okay? And we're going to embrace that and celebrate it. Through the adversity, it was important to keep a normal. We must have homecoming. It must be exciting. Let's not skip out on anything because of the adversity that we're going through. Let's move forward. And our kids did. A couple of, one of the pictures I'll highlight here is Liban, who made it to state, uh, cross-country. Fantastic. And this young man has invited me to come run with him in the mornings. I've said I'll be there on Wednesday, but I can't come by Wednesday because I have to dress up in a suit, so I'll be there on Thursday and, um, but, uh, he, and they, he's done such a great job and many of the students have. Our adapted sports team, um, they continue to win state championships. For those that may not know, beyond the sound of my voice, Apollo is a comprehensive high school where we celebrate every student and create opportunities for every student. I love the sportsmanship that I see in our adapted sports, uh, teams and the love that the students gives them when they are, are heading on to state, as they will again here in a few weeks, I'm sure. If it's striving, and it relates to striving towards excellence, everywhere from La Raya, Washington, scoring 2,000 points, to our, um, National Honor Society students, to our 319 AP students, um, the learning- the learning continues on. This past summer, I was down at the fair, and I was told to go into the education building. I was so excited when I saw artwork from our students at Apollo winning awards there. But how do we do that? What are some of the additional supports? Now, and I, I want to make, and I, hopefully I say it more than once, Apollo staff, you have done a fantastic job this year. I've seen a coming together of staff like you would not, not believe, supporting one another. When I'm asked, when we ask staff to give up their room so someone else can teach in that space, that room that they may have occupied for a number of years, our staff did it without a blink. Absolutely. I will go where I need to go, I will do what I need to do. And the support towards one another, it's been fantastic. So again, if you're listening, thank you. But some of the additional supports that our students have, the opportunity to have at Apollo, and as Tech as well, but I want to highlight a couple here, our Dreamline. These are individual, and they're called coaches, that are the perfect combination between academic support and student relationship building. Many of the students that they work with are struggling in the classroom, that's how they're identified. So they can go to Dreamline, and if they're struggling in the classroom, there may be something else that they're struggling with. Our Dreamline coaches are able to dig through that and help them, and help the students be successful. Right now, our Dreamline program is serving about 50 Apollo students during the day. And then in the after-school program, probably another 27 students that they're supporting. BAR, and that's coming to Apollo next year. Tech has it this year. I'm not really jealous because I have my hands full, but for next year, I'm super excited. We did a learning walk today at Tech. Now, this isn't about Tech, but I want to tell you what I saw as relates to BAR. I saw a BAR classroom, and I saw the level of engagement of the ninth grade students in that classroom. That's going to make all the difference next year at Apollo, and we're super excited about that. Through all of this adversity, now I'm an adult, I can handle quite a bit. We have students that struggled through all the changes. We've had three first days of school for some of our kids. Changes of schedules, that is a lot. But through our focus room, the social-emotional learning, this is where students can go and get that real support. And I don't know if it's in every building, but it must be. We must look at students that have gone through trauma and continue to go through trauma. How are we supporting them as a group? What supports also are we giving to our staff that work with students who have trauma? Because it can affect them as well. We have a large EL population at Apollo, and so there's initiatives that our EL department has, have come up with and interventions, which is fantastic. We really are looking at our data as it relates to our EL achievement and looking at new ways of increasing their achievement. We also have our students that didn't fare very well on the MCA. And here again, creating opportunities, looking at our close to proficient initiative is a way of moving students from not achieving to partially achieving, or to partially meets and on down the line. Another strength of Apollo is our community partnerships. And so Mrs. Erdl is one of our, our fantastic teachers, and she's invited community members to come in and talk to her students. Sometimes she gives them advice, but for the most part, they're giving, our community members are giving our students advice on how to be successful, not only at Apollo or in St. Cloud, but as they venture out as adults. Mr. Weimer, he and Mr. Sandin, I cannot tell you how hard I see these, and all staff, but I'm going to highlight these two today, out meeting with our community partners, getting the donations that they're getting, and then creating a workforce that our community's saying we need it, that we need. Our welding department, the, then the welding class that we have right now is fantastic. Students can leave there and actually go, and go, and go into work. They, they were getting the, a great foundation. And foundation. There, there was a movie that, that I, I watched that, it, it was really, I thought it was hilarious. But at the end of the movie, it said, "As long as the foundation is good, everything else will work its way out." And I love that statement. I see the foundation at Apollo being the amazing staff, day in and day out, doing the job through the adversity. We cry together, we laugh together, and we celebrate together.
I originally intended not to go into education when I graduated from high school because my parents are both educators and I knew too much. But I found that I liked helping people learn and how to discover things. I like physics a lot because it's that apple falling from the tree, the explaining of the why. My personal time, I'm involved in a lot of music things outside of school. I'm in two choirs. One's the Great River Corral, which is an audition choir that's in St. Cloud. I'm also involved in my church choir and do some music things there. We're passionate about our school, definitely passionate about Apollo. So anything we can do that can help send out that message of what we're doing here at Apollo, that's what we want to do. So those couple of experiments that we've done that helps draw people in, say, hey, that's cool. Is that happening at Apollo? Well, yeah, it is. So come to Apollo and we can help you learn how to do this.
I'm fascinated with knowing why things work. That's what chemistry is. Some of my favorite classes ever, one of my favorite classes ever was quantum chemistry, which is all about like the fabric of reality and particles and amazing, amazing things. When you take a chemistry class, what you're learning is about the fabric of reality and everything around us. I get a real charge out of being able to take the complex and make it something that anybody can chew up.
I was a voracious reader when I was in high school, and my teachers taught me to love literature, and so I'm trying to do that as well. Writing can change the world. And so that's how I got started. It's just, it was my love of reading. One of my philosophies about teaching is, you know, I want them to know grammar and I want them to know literature and all those sorts of things. But I, I hope that my students are able to come away with something about a life lesson or just having a positive school experience in some fashion, and that's kind of what I want to be able to do. And it's, so it's, the, the students that come back aren't necessarily going to be my A students or whatever it might be, but they're coming back because I'm hoping that in some fashion I've touched them. I think we have, we are a microcosm of the world here, I think, at Apollo, and that's really exciting. I, I know that I can go approach any other staff member in this building with any kind of problem or just a question about anything, and they're, they're going to be ready with some sort of cheerful answer.
I've known I've always wanted to, to work with kids. Not always, but from a, probably since I was in high school, I'd, I'd help out with kids at my church, and I do a lot of different things for Sunday School or things like that. And I had a really great guy for a school counselor, his name was Mr. Forehand. And I didn't meet with him very often, but he was like, just kind. You could just tell, when I go to his office, I didn't feel like, oh my gosh, what do I do kind of stuff, but he was kind and he's telling me about, well, this is how you did on the ACT, and this is what you might be wanting to look at. I've, I've been impressed from day one when I came to Apollo at all the opportunities for students. It's always awesome and fun to have students come back and be able to just see what they're doing and whether they're coming back to, they decided to go to college and they're, they're needing a transcript and, and wonder how to do that, or, or just coming back to say hi, that, that's, I mean, that's, that's a privilege. That's, that's, it's really fun and able to, to just know that you had something to do with some joy that happened while they were in high school.
I am Apollo.
I am Apollo.
I am Apollo.
And so now, man, we're really rolling now, right? We're at the end and we're, we're doing well, and then all of a sudden, here we go again. You see this message, right? The only word that I can come up with for our staff is resilience. Day in and day out, regardless of what come, has come their way, the Apollo community has come together as a fantastic unit. Thank you. And I'll stay here for questions.
All right. Any questions? Al? Well, I'll start and just say that, you know, speaking for myself, I appreciate you at Apollo. I, when I, when I look at Al Johnson and what he does out there, I see someone who doesn't just see what's happening at the school, but he's always looking to understand what's happening at the school. And there's, you, you always look for the why and to really understand and to communicate. And I think you relate really well with students and staff because of that. I, I truly appreciate what you guys have gone through and done this year. I, I know it wasn't easy, but can I tell you, this is a board member, I sat here and until you brought up that fire, I forgot about it. So that's how easy you made it look. And we know it works because Willie's adopted it for the schedule for February, the every other day.
Pretty much.
If you don't understand what I was saying there. So, but truly, I, I appreciate having you at Apollo. I think you're, you're a great addition to that school, and I know that there's other things coming, and I think you'll be fantastic in that role because it, it takes someone in that role even more so who looks to understand why things are. And I think that you're going to do an awesome job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Natalie, go ahead.
I think Les was first, so he can go. Thank you, Les. I don't know what BAR is. I'm wondering if you can explain both that and then the close to proficient initiative? If you can just expand my view on those two.
I can. BAR is, is building assets, reducing risks. It's a program that came out of St. Louis Park. And in a nutshell, the idea is this, if we can reduce the number of Fs in our ninth graders, we will have better outcomes down the line. And what they saw was, similar to what Apollo sees right now is the number of Fs, and we track those, okay? They saw in a short order, those get decreased down probably 75 or so percent. There's still a certain group of students that will get Fs, and that's not, it's not to eliminate Fs, but to reduce that. But here's the upside, watch your graduation rate hit above 90%. And that's it. It's, it's consistent and it's about what assets and what gifts that do students bring to, to a classroom. And it's also, now, how can I help my teachers come around a group of students and collaborate and, and build a community? When I saw, when I, when I was at Tech, I was watching the Socratic seminar, you could see that. You could see the unit of that group of students. And so again, in a nutshell, that's, that's what it is. And then the close to proficient initiative is really looking at students that we want to move up that scale of success on, on MCAs. Okay? So Mr. Abdi, he's working that, and a group of teachers are closely looking at that and working with, right now, about 30 students that are, that represent what our demographics look like, and how can we move them towards success?
Thank you. That gives me a better picture. I only want to say one more thing, and that is, I will have a son at Apollo next year, and he's very excited. He is highly north side. I mean, he doesn't want to talk about anything on the south side, never wants to live there. So just, he's very north proud. And he, when I'm sitting there at our north side band concerts, which I've seen you at every time, I sit next to people I don't know. And I will tell you that every single mom I've sat next to talks about you. And they, they, it's all good. And what's really neat is to hear them tell the same story, but it's different families. It's just as diverse as our, as our, as our classes are, just the, the parents are so connected to the way you lead the school. And they feel like this is the, this is my community, and they feel a lot of ownership over it, just like I talked about that about students. But I just wanted to let you know that from a parent perspective, I, I know that parents feel really safe with, with you and with what you've done for Apollo, so thank you.
Thank you.
Les?
I've lived here since 1969, and I, for many of you know, I, I use movies as examples of things. And since Willie's been here, Willie Chet, he has managed to amass a group of people who, who really, as the old Germans used to tell me, know their onions.